We are at that time. Okay, so. Yep. I call this meeting in order at six o'clock. Please remain seated for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. And one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Clerk Wright, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Boyne. Trustee Boyne?
Yep, here in Van Buren Township.
Trustee Miller?
Here in BBT.
Trustee Martin?
Here in Van Buren Township.
Trustee Frazier?
Here in Van Buren Township.
Frazier Bud?
Here in Van Buren Township.
Clerk Wright is present in Van Buren Township. Supervisor?
Here in Van Buren Township.
We have a call.
Thank you, Clerk. Today's consultant agenda consists of the board meeting minutes, prepaid list, voucher lists. For anybody that's watching, these are the lists of paying our everyday bills, electric bills, phone bills, things like that that are normal to business. The consent, which means that we pretty much all agree that we're going to pay our electric bill. Also, when there is a Michigan Township Association's Principles of Governance, which lays out some mild principles of how we should govern ourselves to be fair and partial without greed or trying to help ourselves out over and above the people. We also have a yearly Senior Alliance Implementation Plan, which we sign every year, which says that we're going to help our seniors and they're going to give us money and people to help our seniors with them. And the last thing is an IGA with Wayne County that you approved three or four months ago to do the French Landing Park. But when we combined all of them together, the county said, "We just want another resolution where you signed off that this is okay," which you already did three months ago, but we just need to do it to put the signature on the new one.
Again.
Yes. There will be a presentation of the 2020 financial audits today by Plant Moran. It's a big thing for us. New Business today includes a 2020 audit, which you're going to have to approve or at least take into the building. You're also going to have a revote of the mandatory COVID-19 vaccination, regarding mandatory COVID-19 vaccinations for the township employees. We'll have also a discussion on the selection of Davenport Brothers Construction for the building of the Van Nectar project. And we have a building with a corresponding amendment to the approved building and grounds budget. We also have a DTE lighting system that we're putting into Van Buren Park. It was transferring ownership to me asking you to do that.
There we go.
And that's it for the. Moving on to adoption of the agenda. It is not a revised agenda. It is just the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion, we approve.
I have a. I have a change that I think we need to make.
Go ahead.
To the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Under new business, where it says, and I don't know if the, I think this is the right time to do it. Discussion on and to consider a revote of mandatory COVID-19 vaccinations for township employees. We've already voted on this one, so I think this needs to be changed.
Okay, I sent out an email. Hold that right. All right, I sent that email. All right. Yes and no. Okay. Reconsiderations are, okay, so.
But this is a revote.
No, you can revote, do a reconsideration when somebody that's on the majority changes their mind and asks for reconsideration. Example, I voted yes to mandatory vaccinations. I've changed my mind and I'm going to no. So I can bring this back forward. But somebody that voted no in the minority, they can't bring it back forward. So in other words, you can't, if you have a, if you have a vote, you have somebody loses a vote, they can't bring it back constantly. Only a person that wins the vote can bring it back.
But you got to make a motion to re.
Right, you've got to.
That's true. He can, he's, he's probably right. He would have to make the motion and someone else would have to second it to bring it back.
Right.
Your fee change is mine. Otherwise, the motion, you can't, I mean, the motion has already been voted on and it can't be revoked.
Trustee Martin voted against it. He cannot bring it forward. Okay. Anybody that voted. Okay.
Even though it's free, and there's no language change.
Correct, so long as a person that voted in the majority is bringing it forward. In other words, you can't be a sore loser. If you lose the vote and you're a sore loser and you want to keep on bringing the vote forward every week, you're not allowed to do that. But if you're in the winning group that approved the law and you had a change of heart, you can bring it forward.
But you have to make a motion to bring it forward and have support.
I do. So when I, when I bring this forward, I need support.
And where did that come from?
Robert's rules.
Okay.
Yes, that's Robert's order. He's correct. As long as you, our board, our board policy, we adopted, we suggested we follow the Robert rules of order. As long as we following Robert rules of order, we're, we're okay. So while we're talking about this, why don't we put this item as last item so we can get all this other stuff off the plate?
I agree. I agree. So we'll change the order. We'll put number two is number five.
Right.
And then we can move five to two. So we'll just switch those out.
Sure. Or just, just change the numbers going down, Reggie.
Sure. We'll make, yeah, we'll make that.
Yeah, three is two. And just, just read number, I'm going down.
All right.
Okay, all right. So I have a motion to approve. Sherry Frazier, you need to revise your, are you making a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Yes, the revised agenda as presented.
Thank you.
We didn't, we didn't vote on the, we didn't vote on the consent agenda yet, did we?
No, we're getting to that next.
Did we, we didn't get a second for the revised?
We have not. I was just going to ask for one.
Oh, support it.
I have a motion and I have a second for the revised agenda. Clerk Wright, would you call the roll?
Whoa, whoa. What are we voting on?
Just the revised agenda.
Agenda.
Frazier Bud?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee Frazier?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Boyne?
Yes.
Yes, for me, Supervisor?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Trustee Frazier, would you like to make the motion for the consent agenda?
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
Don't we have to read that off?
Usually, we like to.
We have, that's been the consistent rule.
Jared, you would.
Can you read that, Trustee Frazier?
The, you go ahead, Reggie.
Okay. All right, adoption of the consent agenda. Number one, board meeting minutes of July 6, 2021. Two, prepaid list of July 8, 2021. Three, prepaid list of July 15, 2021. Four, voucher list of July 20, 2021. Five, adoption of Michigan Township Association Principles of Governance. Six, approval of the Resolution 2021-16 affirming approval of the Senior Alliance Annual Implementation Plan for Aging Services. Seven, approval of Resolution 2021-17 and Amendment Number One to the 2019 through 2020 IGA with Wayne County Parks.
Okay. Put you down as a second?
Support.
All right, consent agenda, so here you know discussion all in favor. Oh, no. Clerk Wright, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Frazier?
Yes.
Trustee Boyne?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Frazier Bud?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move now to the public hearing, which we have no corresponding announcements. I have one announcement, kind of big news for me. I mean, because I kind of think this is going to be a cool event. The movie in the park is on Friday, July 30. The event starts at eight o'clock and the movie starts at 9:30. It's going to be at Van Buren Park and it should be a lot of fun. We're to transform it into an outdoor movie theater. It's family friendly, of course, with Finding Nemo as the movie. And I believe that they're going to have some food trucks. They are, they're going to have food trucks. King Edward Subs is going to be there, going to be an ice cream food truck too. Bring your chairs and your blankets and your, whatever you want to bring and enjoy the event Friday, July 30 at eight o'clock. I have no other announcements as anybody else. We'll move on to the presentation. Could you bring up Mr. Rinald, please? Elizabeth, would you make the, the announcement from, announce, you know, introduce Mr. Riewald?
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm going to promote Robert Stempian from Plant Moran and Cressa. And it looks like we have Jordan Sirhan from Frank Riewald and Sons here with us as well and Director Best.
Hello.
So I'm just going to give a brief overview and then we'll open it up for questions for the project team. So on May 19 of this year, RFP documents were issued for hiring a construction manager for the community center project moving forward. Super exciting. So the documents were made available by putting them on Mitten and also Plant Moran and Cressa's e-Builder web link. So they are very accessible to a number of firms. Mandatory pre-bid meeting was held on May 27. And then on June 16, we received eight bids and we opened them publicly at Van Buren Township Hall. So the project team reviewed the proposals and we shortlisted two qualified firms, The Daily Company and Frank Riewald and Sons. Also held interviews of both firms on Friday, June 25. So the project team is coming to the board to recommend, and obviously this is just a presentation, but next week we'll be recommending awarding the Construction Manager Services Contract for the Community Center Project to Frank Riewald and Sons, pending final review from our legal counsel. So this recommendation was based on a number of things, including the firm's project experience, the relevant experience in both recreation projects and also municipal projects, the experience of the site team that will be working with us. And then in addition to a past positive relationship between Frank Riewald and Sons, Plant Moran and Newman Smith. They've all worked together in the past successfully. And that would be our project team. So some of the projects that they've worked on that are relevant are the Older Persons Commission Recreational Center in Rochester, the Neighborhood Club, Community Recreational Center in Rose Point, the North Oakland YMCA, the Detroit Athletic Club, and some more. So if approved, at the next meeting, the contract will include a not to exceed cost of $19,740 for their pre-construction services. These services would take place in 2021 as we're designing the project. And why we thought, under Plant Moran's recommendation, to bring them on during this preliminary process is because they're, they would be the construction managers on the actual project. And if they're included in the design phase, it's just better all the way around. So those costs would come out of 2021. It would be charged to the Community Center line item, which is 10169197001. And then after the pre-construction phase, the firm's fee for their scope of services is 2.5% of the cost of work. And that number is slightly fluctuating right now. So the finalized cost would be confirmed in a future guaranteed maximum price amendment when the bids are awarded for the actual construction of the project. So I know that was a lot of information, but we just want to open it up. We have Robert Stempian from Plant Moran, Jordan Sirhan from Frank Riewald and Sons, and Director Best. Do you have any questions?
Could Robert and Jordan say a few words too?
Sure. I'll start off. My name is Robert Stempian. Some of you have met me before in the past. And it was a great job, Elizabeth, for doing that introduction for how we went about our selection process. One thing important to mention too is before we received the proposals from the construction managers, we all agreed upon a criteria-based selection. And it was based on eight different components for selection. So we tried to take any kind of emotional or, you know, non-subject, or try to take the subjective part of the evaluation out of the equation and really look at grading certain criteria based on the firm's history, perhaps the team members being presented for this engagement, the CM fees and costs, workload, their project approach, their safety record. So there was a whole gamut of different items that we graded all these eight firms on. And we decided to shortlist two firms, interview both of those two firms, and then also grade them on their interview and the team that they presented. So Frank Riewald really rose to the top with, you know, the team that they presented, their commitment to this project. Actually, Mr. Riewald was at the interview as well and presented his team, which we felt very confident would be a good fit for Van Buren Township. So with that, I'll hand it off to Jordan, who will be the project manager on this project.
Thank you, Robert. Yeah, thanks for having us tonight. And we're very excited about the project. It's right up our alley. We've, we've been in business over 100 years and take a lot of pride in our projects and working in communities in southeast Michigan.
You don't look that old.
Thank you. Frank Riewald and Sons is actually a fourth generation company. So Frank Riewald himself, he started the company back in sometime in the early 1900s and he actually getting working from until the dot. We're at the Dodge Estates out there in Auburn Hills and built a great reputation. And as Robert mentioned, we feel this is a great fit for us. This type of work is, we're very familiar and experienced in this type of work. And we're going to have a great team and we'll get involved early on and try and work with you as the owners and the architect team and Robert with Plant Moran and try and work out as many things as we can upfront so that by the time we get ready for construction, we've got a lot of the issues worked out and we can really hit the ground running and deliver you guys a successful community center.
I think one thing too to mention about Frank Riewald and Sons is they have a lot of experience with building gymnasiums, recreation buildings, as Elizabeth mentioned, and also black box theaters, which is one of the components for this particular project. And I think the firm has done about eight different black box theaters throughout the years. So I think that's kind of a relevant point to bring up. And also, maybe Jordan, you can talk about Tom, who's your superintendent assigned to this project and maybe his background?
Yeah, Tom has been building projects as a superintendent for, I believe, 40 years. Tom and I are working together right now for the Zot Automotive Group. We're about three, three quarters of the way through the new Chrysler Jeep dealership down in New Hudson. It's been a very successful project and Tom and I work very well together and have a lot of fun doing it. And we've got a great relationship with the Zot family. And it's just been a very successful project and they've got us looking at some more work for them. So we just, we really, we really value building good relationships with clients and doing, doing future work and building good projects together. So yeah, Tom's going to be a great fit out there. He actually just completed down in Detroit at the Detroit Athletic Club. He finished a big remodel project down there in their gymnasium and auditorium. That was a great project and it turned out very well and very similar to what we got going on in this project.
Going to open it up to questions. Anybody have, want to speak, ask questions?
I, to the chair, I'd just like to say I'm pleased that we are dealing with such a high-grade company. And they, I, I know that they will do a great job for us. And if they don't, uh-oh. But they have a good reputation and are well-known and respected. So that says a lot.
Okay, does anybody else have a question? Plant Moran, have you worked with the company before?
Yes, we have. The Neighborhood Club, which is a recreational facility in Rose Point, was one of our projects that we worked with them. Also, we worked with them recently at Wayne State University to build a G League practice facility for the Pistons. Those are the two of the most recent ones that I can recall. And I'm sure there was quite a few others that we've, we've done as well with other team members. And I believe, Jordan, you've worked with Newman Smith in the past as well.
You worked with the Pistons?
It was for their G League, for the Pistons.
Okay.
So that was one of our projects just last year, I believe. And Jordan, I'm not sure if you finished up that project or is it?
No, I believe it's still ongoing. I just, yep. But it's a big project. It's a big athletic stadium.
Great.
Heard they're moving there, yeah. Okay, no other questions then, right?
Supervisor, I just have one comment. I had certain questions today that were addressed by you. We spent some time on the phone. Elizabeth, I know we played telephone tag all day. I got my questions answered and that's why I hadn't called you back. So there we are.
Elizabeth, would you, could you, to, just to be close, can you give us an idea of the timeline that we're looking at?
You're talking about the timeline of the overall project?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. So with the trustee approval of the construction manager happening in two weeks, in the meantime, once that happens, leading up to November, we'll be validating the schematic budget, doing design development, different design review meetings within the township. We'll come back to you approximately at the beginning, beginning of November with the trustee board presentation of the design of the community center. After that is approved, we'll be working at the end of the year to build actual construction documents, get everything prepped for the bid, all the bid docs. The bidding phase is slated right now at the end of February to the end of March with the trustee board approval of the construction bid and the guaranteed maximum price occurring in April of 2022. This alternative schedule right now. And then construction's starting approximately in April, going into April of 2023. And Robert, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, that's pretty accurate. Thank you.
I thought that might be useful. Does anybody else have any questions?
I just want to say it better be good. I'm sure it will.
So we'll. Put a shovel in April of 2022.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
We'll, we'll put a shovel in the ground April, we'll break ground on, in April of 2022.
Yep, that's what we're, we're shooting for.
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Robert and Jordan. We're looking forward to working with you guys. Of course, Jordan, we have to decide that in two more weeks, but no. Okay. All right, we're going to move on then. Thank you very much. Have a good day, you guys.
Appreciate it.
All right, so we're moving on now to our next presentation, which is the financial audit by Plant Moran. This is kind of a big day for us. We find out how good we are, how bad we are. Pretty good.
What do you mean, pretty good?
I know she's here.
There she is.
My computer blinked and for some reason I went away. But I'm here now and so is Dave, it looks like.
All right. I don't see Dave yet.
A second for.
And there we are.
About time.
I'm here. I just, I could see you guys. Well, thank you for letting Michelle and I be before you this, this evening. Again, my name's Dave Paulsack. I'm a partner with Plant Moran. And with me this evening is Michelle Lewis, a senior manager of the firm. And we're here to discuss and cover the results of both the financial statement and this year federal programs audit for the Chair Township of Van Buren for the year ended December 31 of 2020. There were four documents that are going to be part of our presentation this afternoon, or I'm sorry, this evening, that we're going to touch on a little bit. The, the largest document that you would have had was the financial statement itself. For the first time in a long time, we've done a federal program compliance audit. We have our required communication to those charged with governance. And then finally, the graph package. I know we didn't have time to discuss this, Supervisor McNamara, but would, would you like us to take control of the meeting? If you could give, whoever the moderator is, if you could give it to Michelle?
Yeah, I have sharing permissions here.
Yep, perfect, perfect. So prior to this evening's meeting, Michelle and I did meet with township management to cover everything we're about to cover this evening, I'd say, in, in much greater detail. So we went, you know, through the financial statements. I don't want to say page by page, but pretty much covered everything that was in the document. Talked about what the requirement was and what we needed to do for the single audit and really just talked about the overall financial health of the township. So I've indicated there's a lot of documents before you. The largest one is the, the financial statement. And while we compile the information, put it together, it's really the information that the township turns over for audit. The, the financial statements itself, really the only part that's Plumberian is the, Plumberian's is the audit opinion. And as a result of this year's audit, we were able to give the financial statements an unmodified opinion. Now, an unmodified opinion is the highest level of assurance that we can give a set of financial statements. What that means is these statements as presented fairly reflect the financial position of the township as of December 31 of 2020 and the change in that financial position, which would include the revenues and the expenditures that are recorded, the statements of cash, cash flows, and all the notes that are included within the document. Again, this was based on information that was turned over by the township for, for Plant Moran to audit. We did our audit testing. And as a result, we were able to once again give this unmodified opinion. So I've talked about the opinion. I'm going to turn to Michelle, who's going to walk through the graphs, which is really some financial highlights that we thought would be important for, for the, for the township board and those watching to understand. After Michelle talks about those financial highlights, I'm going to spend a little bit more time on the statement and then get into some of the, some of the other documents. So as far as Michelle's presentation, perhaps in this environment, as far as questions, we'll wait for her to kind of get through her slides. And if there's any questions on Michelle's part of it, we'll pause and take those at that time. And then I'll start with, with some of the other documents. Michelle?
Okay, thank you, Dave. Good to see you all tonight. Can you, you all can see my screen, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect, okay, great. Thanks.
And colorful.
Very colorful, yes. We like colors. It's, it makes for a better presentation, right?
Yes.
So if we're looking at this first graph here, it's a four-year trend of your general fund revenue. It's also a good graph because it shows the upward trend in that general fund revenue. If you look at this year compared to last year, you'll see that the general fund had about 800 and, or I'm sorry, almost 900,000 more in revenue. And you can see that the majority of that is in that other revenue item line. The reason for that is that's where your federal grant revenue is. And this year, as you all know, you got a significant amount of federal grant revenue. Just in the general fund, there was $690,000 of revenue from federal programs. And then your property taxes also went up about 3.8%. And your state sources, that represents mainly your state shared revenue, stayed about the same as last year. Then your operating transfers just went up a little bit. So then if we look at your four-year trend. So then if we look at your four-year trend of general fund expenditures, your expenditures actually went down this year, which is unusual when you have federal grant revenue. Usually it's tied to an additional expense. In this case, your federal grant revenue was mostly covering expenses that you're already incurring, like public safety payroll. Um, however, you do see in the public safety line, which represents the most of your expenditures, your expenditures did go up about 150,000. And that was because of those new initiatives that the state gave for, um, or the state and federal government gave for COVID, your hazard pay and your premiums there. Um, then your general government stayed about the same. If you look at the recreation line, of course, you notice there's a decrease there because of COVID last year. There wasn't as much recreation programs going on, so you wouldn't have as many expenditures as you would in the past. And then your other expenditures went down just a little bit, but stayed relatively the same. So overall, the net result of all of this is that your general fund, fund balance increased from 7.5 million dollars to 8.5 million dollars. And of that amount, about 15,000 of that is non-spendable revenue, which is prepaid expenses and inventory, that sort of thing. Um, 1.5 million is assigned for various reasons, equipment purchases, the French landing dam, um, and compensated absences for sick and vacation pay. And then 6.9 or almost 7 million dollars is unassigned fund balance. So what this really means is that the township does have a very healthy level of fund balance. So as you make your decisions, you've made obviously good decisions to keep about 40% of your fund balance in there, in the general fund. So moving on to water for last year, um, you'll see your operating revenue did go down slightly from 10.2 million to just under 10 million. And while your usage in your water sales did go up this year, more people at home, that sort of thing, you did have less tap into the system. So your cap-in fees, your capital connections, those went down this year slightly. That's offset that. Your operating expenses, though, went down by 800,000. And that was also slightly unusual, but it's for a really good reason. So last year, the township made the decision to switch your OPEB plan, your retiree health plan, to a Medicare Advantage plan. And by doing so, your OPEB liability, and Dave will talk about this later, went down significantly. So the effect of the gen, or the water and sewer fund, it really decreased your expenditures by a significant amount of money, and that's why your expenses decreased by 800,000 this year. So that's it in a nutshell. You might have some questions. We're happy to answer them. Um, but I'll turn it over to Dave if you don't. If not, please feel free to ask.
To the chairs. I think it's a very thorough job, and, uh, I appreciate the, the clarity that it gives us as, uh, board members.
Thank you.
To the chair?
Yes.
So, Ms. Lewis, is there any room for improvement here? It has, there, was there any, um, comments that, things we needed to change moving forward?
So Dave is going to give the report to, to the board on anything that we may have found. Um, however, this was a clean audit. Uh, your finance staff did an incredible job, especially in the situation we were all found ourselves in this past year. Um, dealing with a single audit, a federal programs audit, that's new territory for all of you. Um, and both the finance team, the treasurer's office, um, your police department, I, your police department was fantastic in helping us, um, get the information that we needed for that audit.
Audit during COVID, wow.
In a remote environment, so the information that we're used to being able to touch was loaded up on our secure website or shown to us over video so that we could access all the same information that we're used to being able to see when we're onsite, um, which, you know, I think, you know, again, Carol, Sean, and everyone involved did a terrific job. Um, but it was a little bit heavier lift. I mean, there was a lot of information that they used to be able to just hand over that they had to, to, to get to us electronically, and um, I think that, that makes the, the opinion that we were able to, you know, issue as a result of our audit procedures even that more, more, you know, much more important. So, so again, they did a terrific job. Um, Michelle, if you could bring up the, if there's, I'm sorry, if there's no more questions, I'd like to spend a couple of minutes just in the financial statement, because Michelle, you can go to page 55 of the, of the statement. I'll talk a little bit about while you bring that up. So Michelle's talked, you know, about the financial highlights, the general fund and the water and sewer fund are, are two, probably the two most primary funds, um, of the township. Uh, you know, but one of the things that we've been discussing for, for a number of years, not only with the township, but it's really become a point of focus at the, at the, the state level from treasury, is this relates to legacy costs. So you may remember a, a couple, couple of years back, uh, the state legislature passed Public Act 202, which really wanted, um, I'll say better reporting upward to the state about funding levels of, of your legacy costs. And in, in the township's instance, when I'm discussing legacy costs, I'm really talking about your, uh, net pension liability and your net OPEB liability. When I talk about OPEB liability, I'm talking about retiree, retiree healthcare. Now, this information was already being reported, um, within the documents, within your financial statements as required by generally, generally accepted accounting principles. Uh, but in addition to that, uh, the, the legislature kind of set some, some parameters as to what they felt was maybe an, an underfunding situation, which may require, um, you know, more, more focus from local units of government. So what you see here, um, if it scrolled up a little bit, but you don't need to, Michelle, is, is, um, it's a six-year history of the, the township's pension, um, net pension liability. And really the focus here is the top half is, is, is the total liability and really what goes into that. I'll say that next two-thirds is the, the planned fiduciary net position. And that net position is really the assets that are on, uh, on deposit with MERS currently, um, to, to fund those liabilities. And then obviously the, the difference is, is the net pension, which is the, the assets kind of less the liabilities and, and what's still out there. You'll notice that, um, you know, the, the, the most recent column we've got is 2019. And you see, Dave, you said this was the 2020 audit. Why are you giving us 2019 information? Well, um, this is based on the plan's year-end, so, so MERS has just recently completed their 2020 audit. So the standards actually allow you to report this stuff one year, one year in arrears. And I want to bring that up because I want to talk about where we're at, or I'm sorry, where the township's at and where it actually is, is projected to be as of 2020. So I think the biggest takeaway when we look at this is really focusing on the columns that, um, Michelle has highlighted there. So you can see from 2015, this funding percentage, which Treasury and Public Act 202 would have deemed 60% funded, less than 60% funded, to be, um, an underfunded situation that would be required, that would require more attention. So, you know, while the, while the township, you know, met that criteria even as far back as 2015, you know, it was at, at a lower, close to that funding, lower funding percentage. So you can see since 2015 and up to 2019, um, even in a, you know, what was a, a, a pretty up and down market, because you've got put monies aside that you're, you're, you're trying to earn, um, long-term investments on, has moved up to a 72% funding value. So, you, you know, township's moving in the right direction on the, on the pension side. Um, it's clearly north of, of the 60%. Um, the good news is, is this is as of December 30th of, I'm sorry, December 31st of 2019. Um, MERS has recently issued, and the township should have their 2020 actuarial information now. Um, I actually was able to get my hands, not on the township's actuary report, but I, there's a summary document that basically indicates the, 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 the net assets that have been put aside. So one of the key components is, is the net investment income. And, uh, for the 2020 year, um, the, the township's investment in the, in the, uh, plan earned another 2.2 million. You put that in top of contributions, that number, that fiduciary liability, Michelle, that's just under 17 million, is right around 20 million right now.
Wow.
So you've made contributions. Um, up on the liability side, um, we anticipate, now I haven't seen this, but we anticipate that number to be under, just under 2 million. Why it kicked up a little bit this past year is, um, there were two assumption changes, uh, one in the mortality tables and, and one in the discount rate, which actually mathematically created a, a, a higher liability. That, that is not happening this year. Um, so it wouldn't surprise me when you're spending a lot of time in that, in that actuary report, if the 2020 number, funding percentage is right around 80% on a GAAP basis. So if you think about where you were in 2015 and how you moved the needle in 2020, the township is making, you know, as we can see, a concerted effort, um, to really getting, get that funding percentage up.
Great.
Yes.
If we can then move to the, the OPEB or the retiree healthcare. Um, now, under the standards, this wasn't even, while certain information was being reported, it really wasn't a measurable item, um, until 2017. These, both of these documents will eventually build out to 10 years' worth of activity. Unlike MERS, this is actually reported as of December 31st of 2020. But just look where the township is on the funding percentage. Again, the setup's really the same as it relates to liabilities and net assets, but the township has moved from an 11% funding of their OPEB liabilities to just under 30%. Now, Treasury has indicated that, that underfunding is, you know, levels around 40%. And I think the township has recognized it and has continues to take actions to, to continue to fund that. But it, it's an incredible increase in, in percentage in just a four-year period, uh, to move that needle from the 11, you know, to 11.28% to the, to the just under 30%. And, uh, you know, in discussions with township management in our draft meeting where we went into, you know, great amount of detail just in, in the financial position, i- it looks to be a continued concerted effort to move that needle not only to the 40% number, but, you know, well beyond it over the year. So I just want to make sure, you know, that there's the revenue highlights and the expenditure highlights, you know, but this is, you know, one of, kind of one of those things out there that the township has paid attention to and will continue to pay attention to on a go-forward basis.
Dave, are you gonna talk about the, the, uh, net change to the balance sheet? Uh, due to the movements?
The, on the, um, on this document or upfront? Like what, in the OPEB or the, or the governmental?
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say it out loud then.
Okay.
Not only did, I believe that, I believe we were close to $2 million in surplus this year. But we also figured out how to move the, the OPEB, and I believe it came out to almost nine and a half million dollars. We improved the, the township's position in one year and a cash situation.
Correct. Yeah, so, um, it, from, from Michelle's standpoint, when she talked about that increase in, in fund balance, and I think Supervisor, this is what you're, you're referring to. So there's the increase in fund balance, but it wasn't like you were ignoring, in, in the same instance, ignoring, you know, all of these liabilities. So Michelle, if you could just scramble up to page 13, just to, so everybody on the call can see what Supervisor McNamara is referring to. And while the, the totals of revenue expenditures were covered in Michelle's presentation, I think this shows at best, is it scroll up to the top, Michelle, there? Scroll up a little bit. So here's the general fund revenue that Michelle covered graphically, and you can see that there was, it, it, which includes, by the way, the landfill from a reporting, from a reporting standpoint. But the total revenues were 20 million. The total expenditures dropped down a little bit. Were 16.8 million, some, some, some transfer out to cover some debt service. Even after that, the net increase in the general fund as reported within this document was just under 2 million dollars. And I think that's what you're referring to.
And then I was also looking at page five, though.
I, I was just gonna say, the, the net position, so.
Come on, how many times do you take up $9 million in one year?
So, yeah, so the, the net position change for governmental activities in total was 9.5 million dollars.
That's what I wanted to say.
A lot of that is your pension and OPEB change.
It's cash. All right.
Yeah, and the cash part is up on the page before that.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, are there any questions? If, are there any other comments on the financial? I was gonna spend a minute on the, the single audit or the federal program audit, if there's no other questions. Okay. Um, you know, for the first time in, in, in quite some time, the township was required to, to have a separate federal compliance audit, also known as a single audit. Now, this happens when you had, when the township or any local unit of government has over $750,000 of total federal expenditures in any given year. And in this year, Michelle, and I'm assuming you're still working on getting that up.
Whenever, whatever you want. What page?
Um, can you move to page six?
Absolutely.
So this year, and Michelle mentioned it earlier, the township had over $910,000 of, of federal, federal expenditures, kind of in this case, we'll say slash revenues. So you can see it listed out here, and Michelle had actually, you know, referenced it earlier. Um, a majority of that, um, 874,000 came through, um, the COVID-19 funds that, that had been, were made available in the 2020 calendar year. Now, um, none of those, um, I'm sorry, most of that was not direct funded. I shouldn't say that. None of that was actually direct funded. Uh, it wasn't directly received by the township. They were actually monies that were received at the state level, and the state then passed them through to local units of government when you apply certain expenditures which were qualified for reimbursement. Um, you can see the majority of this came through the public safety, public health, um, payroll reimbursement, which the, um, the township applied for, as well as the first, um, the first responder's hazard pay. So those came through applications that were actually made, um, by the township based on eligible expenditures during 2020. A smaller amount of the 38,000, you may recall, um, you know, back in, in August, the state ba, basically put local units on notice that said, you know what? Your CVTRS, formerly known as your statutory revenue plan, we're not gonna make that August payment. But what we will do is give you one and a half times what that payment was in federal dollars. Um, so, so it more than made up for it. You just had to ensure that those monies complied, um, with, with the spending of, um, I'm sorry, with, with the grant requirements under the COVID-19 coronavirus fund, which it easily did, because most of it was, you know, you qualified just on public safety, public health, um, type expenditure. So the, the township received 874,000 as part of our single audit. That's what we tested. So when we go through and test, um, much like we do in the financial statement audit, we do a compliance test. Um, as a result, and Michelle has kind of the report card up here, you can see, um, we were able to give unmodified opinions. We found no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and there was no audit findings that needed to be disclosed as a result of the federal awards program. We did indicate, uh, below under the, we, we do list the major programs that we tested, and we've got that, the coronavirus relief fund, and the fact that we gave an unmodified opinion. Um, just, just for clarification, the oddity qualifies as a low-risk oddity. The answer is no. That, that, that's not that because you did anything wrong, but you have to have had, um, basically a, a single audits in, in the last two years to, 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 to meet that criteria, and you hadn't had that. That just really changes the threshold. It really didn't change the testing that we had to do. Um, the, the testing that we did in that coronavirus relief fund was 90% of the expenditures of. The, the testing that we did in that coronavirus relief fund was 90% of the expenditures of the federal expenditures anyway. So we had more than, more than enough coverage. I'm going to talk about the financial statements, part of it in, in a minute. But from the, I'll just call it the, the report card, again, no compliance, no material weaknesses. We had some significant deficiencies to report, not much different than we have in the past. And it's really related to year-end closing entries and some values of the investment. Um, and I'm going to touch on that in a minute. But, um, you know, as Michelle had indicated, uh, you know, we, the township really hasn't done single audit work, or there's not been significant amount of federal monies that have flowed through where you've actually had to do a single water, single audit work. There was a lot of work that, um, you know, we ran through the police folks to basically to, to test this program. And, and as Michelle indicated, we do really appreciate their ability to get that information to us on a timely basis. And as a result, we were able to get an unmodified opinion. The only finding we've got reported here, and it's reported in a single audit versus in a separate communication as it has in the past, it really just relates to some journal entries. So when we do an audit, journal entries are involved. And if they reach a certain threshold, then we're required to report it to those charged with governance. Really, it's no different than anything we've seen before. And, and to be honest, I think we're reporting the same type of issues that we had, that we, as we have before. These are really related to closing entries, um, which we deem, by the way, not to be material. They, the, these entries are lack thereof, do not have a direct and material impact on the statement, which is why they're not material weaknesses. But they're just, they, they, they reached this threshold where we do report it out. You know, the, the good part of this is, and, uh, you know, I'll keep the positive part, is these are closing entries. It's not, these entries don't result in, in information that was posted incorrectly during the year, which required significant changes to the information that's reported on you throughout the year. And I, and I think that's important because this can give you some sense of hopefully reliability of the information that your finance folks are reporting out to you through, throughout the year. You know, you're getting financial information and, 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 you know, you want, you might be wondering, you know, how, how good is that information when, when we're getting it? What I can tell you is the journal entries that we had to post to, to ensure that this information was presented according to GAAP were insignificant for the most part in material. So again, kudos to your finance team for getting that information in shape and, and reported out to the, to the, um, to, to the township board. Very accurate.
We have a great treasurer.
Well, in reply to that, it wasn't only just the, the treasurer, it was Sean. It was, it was, uh, the, the bookkeeper and, and the finance person in the clerk's office. And I think everybody worked very well together. And I know it was stressing, but, uh, I think they enjoyed working with you that way. And as always, um, you were like, great to see once in a while on or on a phone call or whatever else that came in. But, uh, they did, they did a great job. Carol and Sean are, and Karen should all be congratulated.
But you cracked a whip. I know.
You know, it's, it wasn't me.
They all do a great job.
They do.
Then finally, the, the last thing I really want to cover is the, the required communication to those charged with governance. And you may recall prior to the audit starting, I would have sent out a communication that would have indicated what our planning scope and timing of the audit was, where the higher risk areas were, how we were going to address those to, to make sure that we were comfortable, you know, um, you know, with how they were reporting. And then finally gave the board the ability to contact either Michelle or I, if you had any specific concerns with any of the financial reporting, we take that into consideration and tailor our audit approach appropriately. What you've got here in this communication is kind of, I'll say, the, the full circle. Really what it's, we, you're hoping for this to be as, as pretty plain as it, as you can get, and, and really it was. Other than, um, you know, some of the items that I talked about earlier, just on, on, on journal entries, there was no major accounting policy changes. There was no transaction that la- that lacked authoritative guidance. The, the, the township, we didn't have difficulties performing the audit. We didn't have disagreements with management on financial reporting. To be honest, if we did, we probably would have been talking to this group, you know, well before, before tonight. But really, there's nothing, nothing else for, for us to report out other than what, what has already been discussed. Again, kudos to the finance, finance folks. Um, and then the last part, and I don't really want to go into this in too much detail, but historically we've, um, you know, we provided what we call legislative and informational items. So we, you know, we try to blast stuff out to, to the board when, you know, as far as what's happening legislatively, as we become aware of it, but, you know, I think at the end of the audit, we kind of try to bring it all into one, one document. But in addition to that, we're going to talk about, you know, upcoming standards and really kind of what's hot and, and what's out there. And while I'd love to talk about that, I think in, in this letter, maybe the, the most key thing that I'd want to bring to your attention, if you can scroll down there, Michelle, a little bit more because it's on this page, is the cybersecurity and IT control. So, um, by the way, this isn't, um, saying that we've come across anything that shows that, um, you know, we're aware of any, you know, internal or information, technology weaknesses. But it seems like every time I'm driving in, I'm hearing about this next cyber attack and, and, you know, who's going after what and what kind of information is out there. And, you know, as, you know, in, in this remote environment, we've done more and more electronically. And it just, it's just a reminder, um, you know, even when, you know, things kind of go back to what we'll call some sense of normalcy as far as township operations, this would be something, you know, whi- which really should be a continued focus for the township. Again, we've got nothing to report that we saw, but, um, we also know the attacks are relentless. So, you know, just keep the guard up, make sure, you know, you, you know, you're spending the right time in this area. Because this is as important, you know, information is as important as infrastructure in today's, today's environment. So, so protecting that, you know, is, is as important as, as protecting a building. So, you know, just as, just as a reminder, we keep that on top of mind and, um, I'll get off my soapbox a little bit and IT.
On that point, since the trustees don't know this, because they're going into budget meetings, the, uh, uh, we are making recommendations for a, a $100,000 line item to hire a contracting company that does, not only does cybersecurity, but will actually be able to help us with our mini computers and everything else. It is a big line item that we'll talk to the board about at that time. But, uh, we are, we, I think our board's going to agree.
Are. Thanks for speaking for me.
That's why I'm going to bring it to the board. So I don't know what to say. But it's, we, we, we are, we are going to adjust it in these budgets this year.
So I think that's all Michelle and I had this evening, but we'd be happy to cover or answer any questions on anything we covered or perhaps anything we didn't.
Let's go and catch it.
Okay.
So I, I, I'm very proud of this board for, for taking on a three-year process of getting OPEB under control. I also very, very proud of the fact that we held, we held the line a lot and still paid our employees last year and still managed to pull off almost $2 million in surplus. I still want to say this because it's never happened that I've seen before. It's a, 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 a township that has an $18 million budget does not improve their net position by nine and a half million dollars in one year. It is, I've never heard of it. Have you ever seen somebody improve their net position by 50%?
Well, yeah, I was going to say, well, you, you should focus on the percent, not the dollar, because obviously there's communities out there with a lot of, you know what? Supervisor, I haven't really analyzed or thought, and, and when you started speaking to it, like, you know, Michelle and I, when we're looking, we're focusing more on, on the numbers and we were pointing that out. It's like, yeah, wow, that is.
We worked hard.
Quite a bit of movement in what we could say is a somewhat limited environment, right? So it's always been about, you know, optimizing your revenues and controlling your costs. And it's, it, what it looks like, you know, as a result of the audit is, is that's really where the township landed this year. And, and, and keep in mind, um, you know, when I was talking through the, the federal program audit earlier, you know, the, the, that, that doesn't include the ARPA money that the townships became eligible for this year and can apply through the state. So, you know, um, we, we might forget, forget that a little bit because that's really the hot topic right now. But this, this audit really relates to the calendar year 2020. And there's actually going to be even more coming in, in 2021. You know, we've talked about planning and there's a whole lot, but just keep, keep that in mind too, is, is this doesn't, you know, address at all this next set of funding that's coming through federally and perhaps what the township is able to do with that.
We also have a half million dollars in CDBG money that we were awarded that we're spending this year right now. Is that money that goes on this or is that money that?
Yeah, CD, block grant money is, 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 is a federal expenditure. It, we, to be honest with the dollars that are coming through the ARPA program and, and we've seen it, the CDBG money that, again, as you know, actually flows through the county, would have to be north of 750,000 for us to actually test that. So I'm not sure I've seen that yet, but there might, I mean, there's been a lot of discussion. I don't want to speak by any means on behalf of that county. But, you know, I've sat with the Township Association, the League and the Michigan Association of Counties where there's talks of, hey, collaboration, 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 talk with your neighbor, you know, talk with your counties, talk with the state, um, to see what other projects might be available, you know, where, where communities come together. So block grant, yes, maybe even ARPA monies. Let's, you know, let's see what happens.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Just thank you for the thorough, uh, explanation on where we're headed. I appreciate it.
So before I left for vacation, I called Dave and said, I want you to start the process for us to get re- re-rated by standard and pores. So Dave is going to hold our hands through that.
Right. And, and I contacted you, well, we can talk offline, but I took, contacted your financial advisors and I think we've started that all rolling.
If you look at where we were five years ago, or even seven years ago or so, when, when, when we were rated, maybe eight years ago, before I was here, the, the things that they stated were that you didn't have a capital improvement plan. Well, and, and, and infrastructure plan, and we've redone all our infrastructure over the last four years. We now have a capital improvement plan and we fund our capital improvement plan. They also stated that you had a expiring, um,
Public safety.
Safety village. And they only had a couple of years left on that. And the, um, we now have a public safety village that's good for the next 10 years. They also stated that you have a landfill that's slated to close in a few years and, uh, you're wholly dependent upon its, uh, its money for, to keep going. We now have a landfill with a 35-year plan and it's yielding more money under this plan than it ever has in the past. So I, I think we're in a good position to move our, our rating up.
Yeah. To the chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to, I'd like to do a quick thanks to David and Michelle for doing outstanding job like you do every year. I worked with you for a few years now and you guys are, uh, you know, I mean, you're top notch. Everybody knows that. But I also wanted to make a statement, I know Dave, you remember in his previous years, and Michelle always sit on the bench and said, I know we got a huge obligation, but it's things that you have to write board, get together and put their head together and work on it, that we can lower that obligation. And I have to give kudos to this board because we have the right mixed now put together that did that. I mean, and it takes, it takes the minds to think alike, that can think alike and also have opposition and agree to disagree, but get the job done. And that's what we're doing. We have a great board right at, at this particular time that we're working with. And I'm, I'm happy to be able to be a member, one of them. But, uh, I think we've, we've done great things and I think we've got, you want to see greater things to be done in the coming years. But that's what, that's what happens when you get a collaborative board that works together for the common goal. And that's what, that's what we're doing.
Great job. And three, four years of putting our heads down and moving forward, we did great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
We're going to vote on you next.
All right. And, and I, I'd close with, I hope to be doing this in person next year. All of it.
I assume.
Through the chair.
Oh, sorry, treasure bud.
I guess it's time to make a motion and I would make a motion that we approve the 2020 Plant Moran financial audits as presented.
Support.
Can I do that before public comment?
So we probably should let them say if somebody had something to say. We'll hold the motion till you ask.
Okay, we have a motion, but we're going to ask for public comment. Moderator, could you ask?
Yeah, we actually have a public comment for some business, but not this. It's from Stephen.
It has to be this.
Just for this one. Public comment right after the vote.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So I have a, a motion and I have a second. Clerk, could you call the rail?
Yes. Uh, who made the motion?
Sherry.
I did.
Treasure bud?
Yes.
And I think Christie Frazier?
No, Miller.
Miller, I thought it was Miller.
Oh, Christie Miller, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Christie Frazier?
Yes.
Christie Martin?
Yes.
Christie Bourne?
Yes.
Hurry, Grace. Yes. Supervisor?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moderator, we, we are now officially into the, uh, public comment period.
Perfect. Sorry about that. Um, so we have Stephen Dark, um, said Bambier and Public, or sorry, Bambier and Park Lighting. I love that the park's entry lights are finally being replaced. It would be great if the whole park had lights like these. And then he has a non-agenda public comment that I'll get to later.
Oh, okay.
And that's all I see at this time.
I was told that there might be a few other people out there that wanted to speak on the, uh,
Oh, great. Okay. Yeah, I do have a hand raised and we have Adam Bird. I am going to allow you to talk right now. You can unmute yourself.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, board. We have a, um, obviously a very important agenda item that affects our bargaining unit when it comes to public safety. And that's mandatory vaccination. We understand we voted, met with the board. We had a, I think, pretty positive discussion indicating our concerns. First of all, I really believe that voting to, to continue to have a vaccination mandated to our employees will cause significant hardship. Hardship both to our community and hardship to your employee workforce. When we look at the component of health and safety, which it seems like the vote was for the better good, I can understand your concerns. But also when I look at safety and security and many of the employees that were threatened by email to be terminated, if they didn't comply at one point, I can see a good part of our workforce being reduced. And I could see a very hard standpoint of trying to recruit and replace that good capital talent that you have working for your police department. Being a union president, I have to bring this to the board and to the public. I think it's fair for me to tell you that we are very concerned. I'm concerned as a resident by not having enough security if we can't replace officers and dispatchers that leave. And I hope that your concern as our bosses and the executive board, um, as well. Couple other things that I just want to discuss is this will be a change in our work environment, changing conditions of employment. Being that we are a union, all of these things should have been discussed with the unions prior to, um, a vote, even the first vote. We, uh, we as employees, we want to be treated. We, we as employees, we want to be treated like everybody else. And I understand that this board has some very difficult decisions to make. I express my thought process with many of the other board members. But I also hope that you understand as a township board that we probably have 20% of our workforce that could be leaving. Not replacing them is detrimental to our, is detrimental to the security of Van Buren Township. That's just a start. I can only imagine other people trying to recruit because we are the first people municipal government in the state of Michigan that is choosing this very hard and difficult position. This vaccine was authorized for emergency use. It was not FDA approved. The state of Michigan reopened back up. They're the ones that have medical experts at their disposal. And being that they have medical experts at their disposal, they're in the best position to determine if that will be a mandate. So with that, I ask that you do reconsider your vote, that you vote no mandatory vaccinations and asking people to put non-FDA approved substances in their veins and in their bodies, especially at the threat of being terminated or discipline. You, I really believe that you would be compromising security in Van Buren Township. Thank you for listening to me as a union president of Van Buren Township.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. Thank you, officer.
Through the, through the chair. You know, this, to me, this is no different having been on a school board of requiring students to have certain shots before they enter school. It's for their protection as well as the whole community's protection. And, you know, I just think that there's some things that have to be mandatory. Nobody asked me if I wanted.
Point of order, chair.
Yeah, we're in public comment. I thought it was something, but.
Okay.
All that until the next, until the end.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else? Is there any other people out there that would speak?
Um, it looks like just Adam still. I'm not seeing any other virtual hands. Adam, you're still unmuted.
Um, this, we have union president, Marki Bella. He would like to speak, please.
Oh, great. Okay, sounds good. Mark, I'm allowing you to talk. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I appreciate your time. Let me speak here. Not going to beat a dead horse with some of the things that Adam spoke with, union-wise, condition of appointment, sitting down and talking with. I would just ask the board if they are willing to terminate employees over this, right? Whether you agree with the vaccination or not, or wherever you stand on it, our employees that have not gotten it yet are not going to get it, whether you mandate it or not, right? So we're going to lose a good number of employees that we've spent time, money, and experience in. And those professional employees are going to be able to walk into any other employment, dispatch, police, fire. We can't hire anybody anymore, right? These good candidates are going to move on. No idea what's going to happen litigation-wise, grievance-wise, union-wise, all right? This is a very, very intrusive thing you guys are taking on. You're asking an employee that feels strongly about putting a needle in their arm, injecting whatever's in that vial, all right? Whether you agree with this or not, we have no idea. No one can tell anybody what a long-term effect of getting the vaccination, vaccination is. I'm vaccinated. That was my choice, all right? Somebody else that's not vaccinated, that is their choice. I think there's other things we can do. And I'm asking the board to please consider your decision today and maybe look at other things we can do to protect employees and protect the citizens. A very simple, easy thing so we can, so these arguments are not made, litigation is not there. Mask, mandate an employee that's not vaccinated to wear a mask. Very simple. Instead of, very simple, very less intrusive, instead of forcing them to make a decision, do I get a needle in my arm or do I move on elsewhere, right? We're going to lose a lot of good quality employees and I just want to make sure you understand that if we do make this decision, right? Because people have gotten it, they've gotten it. People that haven't got it, they haven't got it. It's no different than the general public. You're not going to push the general public to get vaccinated if they feel strongly against it, right? So please, I would ask to look into a different option. Mandate a mask for employees. That's, that's all I have right now. And I just ask you to please reconsider this. We're going to lose a lot of quality employees. We're going to lose a lot of money invested in these employees. You're talking about employees from probationaries to 10, 15 years on, all right, and all in between. So just please reconsider, maybe talk about other options. That's, I beg you to do that. Mask is, to me, the simplest one. I thank you for your time and this evening.
Uh, no, no, we're not. We're in public comment right now, so we haven't.
Okay.
So when we bring it forward, you can speak. The, I understand Chuck, the other union president, was going to be speaking. Is Chuck out there? I don't see.
I, I'm not seeing any, um, yeah, not at this time, it looks like.
Okay. All right. So, okay, let's, all right. So unfortunately, this thing's been moved back, which probably shouldn't have been in hindsight. Do you want to take it on now or do you want to wait until the end?
I say we keep it in the order that we agreed on earlier.
I agree.
All right. I can't, all right. Number three, number two then is discussion on to consider approval of Davenport Brothers Construction for the Belleville Area Museum's Connector Project and to consider approval of the amendment. Elizabeth, I'm not going to ask for a motion until you make your, there has been one change in this. So Elizabeth, you make this presentation.
Absolutely. So we put the project out for bid. Bids were received and publicly opened on July 12th, 2021 at Van Buren Township Hall for the Belleville Area Museum Connector Project. We received two bids. Staff went through a critical review of the bids that were turned in. After reviewing the low bid, it was clear that the bid received did not capture the entire scope of the project. So the remaining bid, Davenport Brothers Construction, came in at $182,050. After negotiating with Davenport and reviewing the bid, the bid price was reduced to $165,000, which was not reflected in the board packet. It was a new development, so 165,000. So this would require a $15,000 budget amendment from fund balance into building and grounds to cover the difference in the project expense. If you remember back in March, I believe it was, the board approved $150,000 budget amendment to go into building and grounds for the project. And we have $25,000 worth of grant funding coming from McCaca. We have to have a shovel in the ground soon for us to keep that grant funding. So if both the bid selection and budget amendment are approved by the board, the project construction would start.
All right. Now, would anybody like to make a motion to approve this?
Through the chair.
Treasury Bud.
I would make a motion that we approve Davenport brothers construction for the Belleville Area Museum's Connector Project and consider approval of amendment to the approved fiscal year 2021 billing and grounds budget.
Support.
Okay. All right. Now, are there any questions for Elizabeth on this? Hearing none, then we're going to call for a motion. We've already discussed it enough times in the past.
Well, hang on a minute. I'd like to speak on this and it doesn't involve Elizabeth and I should be given that opportunity, supervisor.
It just did, so if you go ahead.
No, you said, you said that if you had any questions for Elizabeth, I didn't. I have questions in general, or I have comments in general. I should be given that opportunity. So when this, this first got brought to the board, it was originally put up for, what was it, Kevin? What was the dollar amount? 100,000 and then not to go, then we said 100,000 and then it wasn't to go over 150,000. We had that, that, that little rule on it that absolutely couldn't go 150. And now it was bid on for 182,50, but it was settled on 165, 165,000. Now, originally I voted no on this and I, and all of you know why. And I was going to vote yes on this because I respected the board's opinion. And even though I was the minority here, but everybody understood my reasoning. But when it goes over bid that much, I'm voting no on this and I wanted everyone to know why. It's, it's exorbitant. It's just too much money. So I'm going to be voting no respectfully.
That's okay. And I'm, I'm, I really love that you guys are staying to the issues, not, you know, everything's. Vote no, yes, that's great. You guys are very thankful for the fact that you're staying to the issues, you're being on point. Great for us.
Right quick, through the chair. My question is for Elizabeth. I think we, we had a little conversation prior, oh, yeah, after the bid opening. She explained to me, I, I had a question also, why was the bid so high? Why did it kind of, you know, based on what we previously said? And I think I was told, if I remember correctly, Elizabeth, that it requires a, some architect to work. This week, and it's reason why some of the work is higher. And Davenport has an architect on staff. Most companies don't have one on staff. I guess that has some consideration in regards to, in regards to why the bid has increased. I just would, I would, I would have liked to seen someone else bid on it, give them some competition. But I guess I can understand why it increased from that point to the point it is now, if that's the case. It kind of gives a disadvantage to, I know to some companies though, because it's not a lot of builders out there that can do the work, that has an architect on staff. But I do want to see the job finished, so I'm willing to, to approve it tonight, so.
Director Best?
Yes, I just, I wanted to step in and provide some clarity. This is the first time we've gotten a bid on the design and that was proposed by the original grant from Katie Dallas and the museum, for the museum project. So nothing has increased. It's just the project as envisioned costs more than what was initially anticipated by the architect that kind of drew up the design. So this is really the first time we're getting some accurate numbers from a contractor and not a designer or architect. So that's why the price is where it came in at. If you remember last time, we budgeted an amount based on what the architect that had did, did the concept for the McCaca grant on it might cost. But that was from 2019, as we talked about back then. Since then, we've had the COVID, the run-on products. And so right now, costs are slightly higher than what they anticipated from the original design. So this is really the first time we're getting some numbers, just to provide some clarity for the trustees.
We did get, we did ask O'Neill Construction for a construction estimate and they did it based upon the, the same kind of bidding format that we had. Remember, Mr. Trustee Miller, we talked about divisions where you have division one demolition. So they did one and they charted it out and it came in at $250,000. So it was, but.
For this project?
For this project. One of the reasons why there's no skylight in this project is because what O'Neill told us would have cost for a skylight.
But I'm going on what happened at our last meeting. I'm going on that information.
One more question, I guess. And I guess because this is considered a tri-community museum, are we going to get any, have we get any funding on anything that we do from any other communities?
Did we even ask?
We get annual funding from the city of Belleville and Sumter Township. It's not project-based. It's just a annual contribution.
Right, but did we get anything in addition to? Did we even ask for anything in addition to their annual contribution?
Not that I'm aware of.
I'm aware of the annual funding. Neither, but.
Our building.
I was, I'm talking about all this, all this, the building additions that we're putting into the museum. Yes, it's not just benefiting us, it's benefiting three communities, but it's been ongoing. I digress. We can, we can go ahead. We can vote on it.
Hey, I'm for it because we have one footprint in the city of Belleville. It's that building. It's our building. And I want it to be as nice as possible. And that street, foresterie, is going to become the center of the festivals that happen in Belleville. Because the way it's laid out with the, with the plaza on one end, the library on the other, the two bars there. And if we can do it right, the Belleville Area Museum, creating a center point within the city of Belleville that Van Buren Township has a footprint with its name and its property. That's one of the reasons why. That's the reason why I wanted it.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Is there any way that we could incorporate Van Buren Township with Belleville and Van Buren Township?
You mean these cities? Communities? No.
Communities.
No, according to state law, the city of Belleville could, could take over Van Buren and we would become Belleville City, the entire area. A township cannot take over a city, though.
No, I'm not talking about taking it over. I'm just talking about adding our name to the, to the signage.
It's our building. We can do what we want.
Well, I'm forgetting our name out there that we're supplying it.
I think she was, Tracy Frazier's saying is it's called Belleville Museum, when actually we do most of the funding and upgrade.
Amen.
To the tri-community museum or something. Van Buren Belleville or something, museum or something.
Yeah.
Some notoriety from the museum.
He knows that that's going to happen sooner or later on the side of the building.
When sooner or later?
We're paying the biggest share.
Through the chair. I'm sure it's going to be addressed because we have, we have had, been out there looking with architects that we're going to do some, some landscaping projects. We've also talked with the people that are, where we're going to construct a new sign. And I think that the ones that it was rather, Kevin, it was myself, Matt, Elizabeth, we were all out there with those folks and Don. And the general consensus is there will be a name that that museum is Van Buren Township. So that is being addressed. So just hang on. It's being addressed and we will take care of it, but we've got a little way to get there yet.
Sounds good. We're holding you to it.
We'll do it.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, clerk, right, would you call the roll?
Yes. trustee Frazier?
Yes.
Christie Miller?
No.
Christie Martin?
Yes.
Christie Boone?
Yes.
Treasury Bud?
Yes.
Yes, for me, supervisor?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on, we're over to discussion and to consider approval of DTE Community Lighting Contract for Van Buren Township Park in the amount of $30,000. Can I get a motion for the approval of this?
I'll make the motion, supervisor.
Trustee Miller?
What?
Part.
Can I get clerk, clerk, right, which I rarely hear?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't, I don't feel like raising.
Okay. So you don't need to make the motions. So.
I won't hear the buzz in time.
Director?
All righty. So the existing lights along the entry road at Van Buren Park are in very poor condition. A few of the lights are broken off at the base. Others are needing other repairs. So staff contacted DTE. So staff contacted DTE and inquired about whether or not their community lighting would be a good uh fit for this issue. So DTE conducted a site assessment, developed a lighting design for the entry road. This lighting design provides LED light bases, um wiring, and also includes the demolition and removal of the existing lights. So additionally, DTE will be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of all of these lights. The cost to install is thirty four thousand dollars, a one-time fee. Uh, again, this includes the demo and disposal. And then once it's installed, the only in cost incurred by the township would be the cost to operate. The seven new lights, which is estimated at about two thousand dollars per year. Um, so participating in this community lighting program will bring significant savings to the township. Uh, reduce maintenance responsibility, increase safety in the park uh for our residents, our guests and our staff as well. So staff is requesting the board to consider approval of the DTE contract for the amount of thirty four thousand. This would be charged to the twenty twenty one building and grounds capital outlay budget, uh where we set aside funds for this. And in response to Mr. Dark's uh public comment from earlier. Uh, we're hopefully planning on doing and we'll talk a little bit more about it in the budget meetings um up. But a master plan for Van Buren Park, so we're able to get some grant funding for the park. So although we had the money set aside for doing the entry lights that are in need of repair right now in twenty twenty one. Um, we definitely would consider a lighting system um as part of the master plan, but we wanna do that. Um, instead of doing the lighting first and working the master plan around that. So that's definitely in the works, but as far as twenty twenty one goes, we're just looking at the existing entry lights.
And to add to that, these lights are the lights that make sense right now. The the roadway is is a one and a half car wide road. Uh, it is the area in the park that currently uh really needs to have lights. Especially in the, in the morning and in the night for our uh police department. Um, this is the area that uh the majority uh of our uh. Majority of our residents, when they utilize the park, they're gonna go down this into that, round that corner. We have a light uh past the the bend. So light number one is, well, the southernmost point is really critical and that's the one that got knocked over when a truck backed into it, trying to do a turnaround. So that that one really provides safety and uh and uh for our passage of vehicles. As well as for our public safety is doing a heck of a job. The other unique feature about these lights is they are standard issue. Uh, lights i- if from DTE and you can get them. Uh, if something happens to them, they have them in stock over there in Van Buren Township off Hagerty Road. And they can be replaced pretty instantly. And if you put that back up. Uh, real quick, Elizabeth, uh Dan Power is gonna give you points for this. You notice there's a feature on the side of these lamp posts that allows us to put banners up. But one of the really neat things that we'll be able to do here is provide banners for our park for special events. For seasons, for time of year. Um, this is really uh something that is a big step for community services and I'm proud to. Public Services is proud to partner with Community Services on this project.
Thank you. Uh, are we currently doing community lighting projects other than this?
Yes, we are. In fact, uh, the township was one of the first municipalities in the region. To participate in the community lighting project for our township hall. Our township hall lights were replaced in two thousand seventeen eighteen ish, right in there. We replaced all the lights at Township Hall uh for a cost of about a hundred thousand dollars. And then those lights that we have in Township Hall, which bring us safety, security. Uh, and almost zero maintenance cost because. ETs provides all maintenance and replacement of lights at Township Hall parking lots. We've also utilized the community lighting project for some of our current businesses who are also participating. Ashley Capital is looking at adding community lighting to their second phase. As well as uh, there's two other developments that are going in off Hagerty Road that are in talks with DT right now. Um, this program actually gives us a discounted rate on electricity and utilizes the up-to-date DTLED light product. So we successfully do it now. Uh, it saves us time, money, cost, effort. And we're really excited to expand our holdings in the community lighting area.
Great. Are there any questions? Are there any comments?
Sounds like a great improvement and uh something we need for the resident's safety and uh. You know, just the atmosphere in the township.
When will this be complete? By, what was that date again?
So once we um sign the contract with DT and do some administrative um tasks, they usually say it should be done within ninety days.
Thank you.
Hearing no further comments or questions, uh clerk Wright, would you call the roll?
Who made that motion?
Miller.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Yes, for me, trustee Fraser?
Yes.
Trustee Boyne?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Reggie Bud?
Yes.
Kevin Magnamare, supervisor Kevin Magnamare?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving along, next item is uh mo- I need a motion for approval for Fishbeck Contract Services. To produce an emergency uh report for our water and sewer group, water group might mean. Can I get a motion for the?
I make that motion since.
Support.
Alright.
Excuse, there's been some comments made about how fast people are making motions. Is that, why is that a? Something that we're discussing? Look, I'm doing nothing more than what other board members have done in the past. But I never saw them ca- called out for it. I'm trying to move this along, that's all our parts. And I don't see why this is funny when women are called out for making motions here. Plain and simple.
I don't know who called you out.
I don't respect, you know, I don't.
Makes motions, that's why I'm shocked he was making. That's all I.
I'm doing nothing wrong here.
Trustee, I didn't, I didn't call you out, I don't know.
You didn't mention my name, but you 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 implied.
I asked who made the motion, I said.
No, here you did, but when I made the motion, you made a comment. And that's, it's, there's no reason to.
No, I I second your motion and the supervisor.
I know you did.
He said he rarely hear from me. I said I didn't hit the buzzer in time.
I know.
Okay, uh, director Taylor, could you take it away?
Sure. Well, good evening, Board. Um, I just wanted to bring this to you. Uh, this is the second part of a project that we've been working on this year. The EPA issued an order that all local communities are to. Have a risk and resiliency assessment done of their water and sanitary systems as well. As um uh an emergency response plan, if it hasn't been created, one needs to be created under the. Uh, demands or the the uh specifications of which the EPA is outlined for us. And so we've completed the first part of that. The board approved funding for the risk and resiliency assessment back in April. We completed that, we got in that and we submitted that to the, to Eagle. Uh, by the June thirtieth deadline as required. And now we need to work on the second part of this, which is the emergency response plan. And this is a um. Joint effort with myself and uh Fishbeck engineers working on this together to make sure we're in compliance. And it is due uh no later than third, uh December thirty first of this year. So uh what I'm requesting of the board is twenty five thousand dollars to uh secure Fishbeck services. In order to do this special project.
Hey, are there any questions? Comments?
I'd just like to, through the chair, I, it's necessary to have an expert like uh. Fishbeck uh with us on making decisions like this.
No, it is.
They're a very good resource, I will say that.
Last call? Okay, clerk Wright, would you call the, uh, call the roll?
Uh, yes, for me?
Fraser?
Trustee Fraser?
Yes.
Trustee Boyne?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Reggie Bud?
Yes.
Supervisor Magnamare?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Hey. Well, I'm gonna start stuff up right up, right off the get go. Um, by Robert's rules, I am allowed to make a motion. And I will be making the motion. I'm not sure if I'm gonna get a second, but I'm going to make it. Um, I make, I I I, I I am making a motion to uh to. Um. To reconsider and, let's see, how would you make this motion?
You're making it, we're not.
To approve not mandating COVID vaccinations for township employees. Now, we already went through the reason why we're allowing, why. So I, as a, um, wait, I need, I need a second, is there?
You're, through the chair, your motion be, should be to rescind the motion from the previous meeting and give the date. That's what it should say.
I would like to make a motion to rescind the motion from uh regarding mandatory vaccinating of our employees.
Support.
Second, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to begin by giving my reasons. First of all, last time I thought we were in a discussion, I really didn't think we were in a voting mode, a voting mode for something like that. I I did not see it coming. I was against it when I walked in. I did side a little bit, I I did side though and I was moved by trustee Fraser's argument. We do require vaccinations of ro- uh mumps, rubella. Oh, polio and things like that. But to me, I thought, and that touched me. But I also realized the schools are not requiring that they get vaccinated teachers or the uh. Uh, the employees or the students. Um, and that these, these things that these um. These things that 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 these mumps and rubella and stuff like that, they was well thought out. They were well tested, were out there for a long time, they were vaccinated policy. And it wasn't like something that just came out for a year. I've always felt that local government should follow the state and federal government's policies. Especially when it comes to things like health, the environment, water quality, sanitation. Anything that's highly technical, I always believe that locals should follow the state. Or the uh, the federal government, you've heard me say it here a dozen times before. And it's a rule that I've lived by and I really stepped out of, out of line by going against that rule. Cause we just don't have the capability to fully analyze this. This best vaccine issue has has not been fully approved by the federal government. It's only uh allowed for emergency use right now. Uh, which we can say weren't an emergency use. And this, and the federal government has not mandated this vaccine, nor has the state government or the county government. Um, uh. The only thing they mandated is that everybody wear a mask. Now, in case you don't know, at Van Buren Township, does have a policy, but if you're not back vaccinated, you will wear a mask. And that is our policy, that you must be, you must wear a mask, not vaccinated. I called the Michigan Township Authority and they told me that they don't know of any. Hello? And the Michigan Township Association told me that they don't know any other township that has made this mandatory. I contacted this conference of Western Wayne, which are the seventeen governments of Western Wayne County. Cities, Westland, Lebanon, US. None of them have it and they don't know of anybody that's mandated this. And I finally um made it um. Finally, I wanna make it clear. I have a real problem with the idea of taking something like this and mandating um. Of firing employees that don't get vaccinated. I have a real problem with firing people. And quite frankly, if they were at the feds, the feds aren't, aren't mandating it. They're not firing people for this. The state's not mandating it. They're not firing people for this. The counties are not mandating it. They're not fighting, they're not firing people for this. And none of the cities and townships are mandating this. And they're not firing people for this. But I have a real problem with firing people over this issue. And that is my biggest problem. Um, you know, I'm gonna drop it there and I'll let it go on to the next person that wants to speak on it. Uh, actually, the next person would be Mr. Martin, since he seconded. And he actually was the only one that voted wisely the last time. Trustee Martin?
I'll defer to later.
Okay. Alright, who would like to speak next?
I just, I can go ahead and get my. And get my uh speech out since uh, I'm the one that made the motion at the, at the previous meeting. And I gave my uh, I gave my reasoning at the previous meeting why I. I so dearly uh. Set on this uh, uh, this uh agenda, uh, and why I think so hardly of this. I really have a problem sending. An employee out to do a public ser- service to our constituents, knowing the fact that me knowing. That that employee is not vaccinated. That's my biggest concern. I gotta tell, I've had various conversations during my last, during this, since the last vote. Uh, that was my reason in the beginning. I think that it, because we are a public service entity, we are serving the people. Not only should we be uh. Um, lobbying the fact that people get mandated, we should do everything that we can to make sure that people get mandated. I don't wanna terminate no one neither. And I don't think that mandating to this, this vaccine is is me saying you are fired. I think it's giving you an alternative to make a decision. Sometime we have to make a hard decision. And as elected official, I think this is a decision we have to make. I have to make. I'm not telling no one else what to do. But that was my opinion uh, June fifteenth. It's still my opinion. Now, nineteen, this is a, and the reason I'm saying that, we're in a pandemic. If we was making, if we were making table lamps and everyone punched in at seven thirty and punched out at five. And they, and they come and work and they go back home to their family. And we said, and they don't wanna take the vaccine, so be it. That's your choice. You're not affecting no one else but you and your family. It's a choice you have to make. But you're affecting more than your, you and your family, you're affecting the people that walk into the township, the people that you go out to supposedly serve. And we do send people out to serve our constituents. And me knowing that I'm sending a person out, that's not, whoever it is, that's not vaccinated to serve our resident. I just can't say yes to that. Uh, and that's just me. Uh, and we had last pandemic, I haven't lived through another pandemic, so I don't know, no choices have been made. I don't know nobody that has lived through another pandemic. Nineteen eighteen, nineteen nineteen was the last pandemic. They didn't have the resources that we have now. I'm sure if they did, they would have tried to come up with a vaccine. So they had to get hurried immunity by having losing lives. People had to die to develop. Uh. To develop that. There wasn't no vaccine to take. To get hurried immunity, people had to die. Millions and millions of people, a lot more than now, died. We're losing people now. They're dying. And we're, now we have this Delta variant that's coming back. They're calling it. The new, the new pandemic, it's a pandemic of unvaccinated. I understand and I, and I, and I recognize the, the, the choice that people has to. To take a vaccination or not take a vaccination. That's your choice, given the position that you're in. But in the position that we're in, I think it's necessary for us to make a decision. And say that we have employees that provide a public service and we should require them to get vaccinated. I'm not asking nobody to terminate themselves, but that's a requirement. If I decided to go and leave here tomorrow and take another job and the requirement say whatever it is, I have to abide by that requirement. Or else I won't work there. And also had to ma- made to this, had this conversation with trustee Martin. Him and I are the only two people I know that's on the board that's a veteran. I joined the United States Air Force because I. I joined the United States Air Force because I wanted to serve my country, that's something I wanted to do, I wasn't forced to join it. But I walked it after joining, I was put in a line and marched down to the, uh, the, uh, building and stood in a line and dozens of vaccines was pumped into my arm. I didn't know what they were, I know, I did know that if I asked a question or I denied, if I would've walked out, got out of that line and said, I don't wanna take the vaccine, they would've told me, you had a choice to make, either take the vaccine or you go home. I didn't wanna go home, so I stayed in that line. I'm not saying that that's wh, where we are now. But it's a decision that I made in order to be a United States Air Force, airman. And I think it's a decision that we, we are at now, that someone has to make that tough decision. I don't know, I'm telling anyone that's listening, no, I don't wanna terminate anyone. I'm hoping that you will make the right decision and protect not only yourself, your family, your coworkers, but your constituents that you serve. That's my position on this, nothing more. I like all, I, I like all the employees that we work with. Everyone tells, I can tell, you get a test that I try to help and do what I can for every employee of the township. But so I'm asking them right now to help me, help us serve the public in the right way.
Hey, I just wanna be very clear on one last thing. I will not fire anybody unless you tell me, fire them. I mean, the words terminate themselves and, and things like that, I, I know they're, I know, I know how you feel. Unless I'm told to fire them with those words, I won't do it.
I'm not gonna tell you to fire anyone, but I, I would like to know what and we, if, if, if this stays, it has to be an alternative. I just like to know what the alternative is gonna be, it can't be, I mean, it's have to be, it has to be an alternative for, uh, to refuse a, a directive.
I'll do whatever you guys want, but you gotta be very specific, I will not take any but those words otherwise. But for the last alternative, there's no alternative, but let me know what it is. I'm happy to.
Through the chair. I don't quite understand why, you know, nobody asked me if I had to get a smallpox or a polio shot or whatever. You know, I don't know what the, the COVID is a real danger to our community and to the, the citizen, the residents, so I, I just don't understand saying you got a choice. I'm, nobody gave me a choice and it's sometimes it's for the greater good. And those decisions were made for the greater good, or we wouldn't even be here today the way I see it. So, you know, get this, I don't know. You're jeopardizing your coworkers if you don't get the vaccine.
Well, we, well, they, they are required by Van Buren Township policy and by, and state policy and fed policy and state police policy. Like I have the state police policy that unvaccinated people are required, cops, uh, state troopers are required to wear masks, that's their policy.
And that's it?
That's it, yeah. I mean, I, I, I seriously, I, I, so last, the last vote we had basically said we're mandating vaccines. Never said what I would, what I was supposed to do if I did mandate the vaccines. Quite frankly, I don't know, I mean, there's gotta be some further direction than that if you're gonna mandate a vaccine.
Agreed.
That's why I asked that question the, the first time we hastily voted on this.
Trustee Martin, you were wise, I wish I were a listener.
Well, it's not a matter of being wise, but I, I, and I'm sorry through the chair, I'm gonna go ahead. Make my comments now. And, and clerk right, uh, I agree in the service you did, you did take vaccinations, but being a military service is quite a bit different than being in the employee of a, um, of a municipality and your rights as a soldier are not really, you really don't have it. You have the right to do it or get booted out and this is not, this is not the case here. A, and I'm, it hasn't, it's not a, the government is not, the FDA has not approved this and I think that is, I think that is. I'm s, I'm sorry.
I just say, I would say we never lose our rights, but go ahead.
Well, if you have to, if you have, if a government entity has to require a person to participate in a medical, and I'm gonna call it a medical procedure because that's what it is, not a major procedure, but it's a medical procedure. And I don't want the government telling me what I can do with my, with my body and what I need to, to do. I think it's a personal choice. I work at a facility with, uh, eleven hundred people and everyone there is not vaccinated. But you must wear a mask if you aren't and you must self-report and you have to self-report that you either A are vaccinated or B, if you're not, that you have to wear a mask. And we work very close together and you got eleven hundred people going home to eleven hundred families and, and everything else, and I think our, uh, our exposure risk is a whole lot greater. So I voted, I voted no against it last time because A, you didn't have a plan for if, if there was no compliance. And secondly, I don't, I, I think it's what's well within their rights to choose whether they want to be vaccinated or not on experimental, uh, drugs. I, I got the vaccination because that was my choice, I didn't have to, but that was my choice. So I, I, I think if you're gonna make something mandatory, you gotta have, there's gotta be a consequence to not doing it then. Yeah, I don't know what that is and like I said, we, I, I don't think you should fire anybody or whatever. I don't even think it should be mandated, period, so. That's my, that's my, uh, I'm gonna get off my soapbox now.
Okay.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I guess I would say, um, in, w, one response to you, Trustee Martin, uh, MTA has put in their last magazine that it is okay to demand the vaccine. We know all of our, most of our healthcare as, associations have decided that they have mandated it for their employees. We are a service organization, our biggest service is to people and if, any people that walks in and out of these doors. Uh, I have girls in my office who have children at home that can't be vaccinated, that are scared to death what they might be picking up and bring home, we put up plastic shields across the counter, we wanna have them converted permanently to some kind of a glass shield so it looks more, uh, pleasant than the shields we got hanging up there now. But, and with this new variant out there and for as rapid as it's spreading, people that are vaccinated can get the disease, they probably will never go to the hospital and they will get over it. But at least they are protected. And, and I guess I don't know why our police officers, because they have more contact than, than we do, why they are wanting to protect themselves or protect their families, I guess that's the part that bothers me worse that, that I, I feel that they should want to protect their families. Yeah, we probably need more of a policy is what we could do if we demanded and, and that should be discussed and, and I know the HR director has been working with employees, we extended it to ninety days so they could comply, we also said we, we wouldn't do the firing and we would help them work through the process. There, there are outs if someone has a religious belief, if, if they have medical reasons and the doctor says no way, we are honoring that and then they should be wearing masks. Even when we were all wearing masks and not to be critical, but police officers were coming into the building without masks. So, and you never knew who was and who wasn't. We have someone else that came in the building that wasn't vaccinated, did not have a mask. We know that when people are asked in stores, there's been uproars and all of that kind of things. I, I just, I don't get it, to me it's frightening, uh, for my grandchildren, my children are grown, but I've got grandchildren that, that are coming up in this whole situation and, um, I, 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 my heart just says this is the thing we need to do to protect each other.
I have to, I have to make, I have to let you know that you, we, we've been singling out. It's not just places, police, fire, dispatch, water. Hold on, more. And we have another area too. So it's not just there, we have it in numerous areas where people are refusing to get vaccinations.
Well, all I can say is they wouldn't have been allowed in school. You had to have vax, you had to be vaccinated to attend a public school.
Nope, Van Buren Township, Van Buren schools do not, have not mandated, uh, school employees, teachers or students to be vaccinated.
For COVID, but for other diseases they have. You can't go to school if you don't have the smallpox, the rubella and I can't even think of the ones.
They have not mandated COVID.
Well, that's their problem, as far as I'm concerned.
All right.
I, I wanna keep the, the community safe and I think our employees, you know.
It brings us back to our same position.
Fair, to be fair, as, as far as what the schools mandating is, is, uh, Trustee, uh, Frazier is speaking. Um, while we are in the middle of discussions here, let's, 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 let's be fair, the schools have not mandated uh, COVID for the students for that matter, because there is no uh, emergency or otherwise, uh, vaccination for kids, I believe, under twelve or under nine or something like that. In other words, there is, there is no vaccination for them, so let's be, let's be a little bit fair as far as how we're discussing this, okay? Um, there is no vaccination for kids, uh, right now, I think it is for teenagers.
Yes, there is, yes, there is, as a former school board member, there are shots that are required before you can, uh, get your student enrolled in Van Buren Public Schools.
We're talking about COVID, so let's, let's, let's stay on that point.
Okay. But he's saying, you know, there's no restrictions, yes, there are.
So I think what, I think what Trustee Boyne was saying that it wouldn't be fair for our schools to mandate vaccine when they can, can't mandate it for all. There, it's not available kids under twelve. There's only, so if you're under twelve, you can't, it's not a vaccine available for any kid. I'm sure they got parents out there that's, that's waiting, the CDC saying, saying that possibly they might be ready for mid-October, under twelve, they're doing the studies now, but right now they're not. But, I mean, and like I said before, I truly believe once, after October, once they are available for that age group, they can get to that point. Dr. Fossey actually said this, this weekend, it will get to a point where it will be FDA approved. I haven't, I haven't talked to a doctor, I haven't seen a doctor on TV or on nowhere other than social media saying that the vaccine is not safe and it's not good for anyone. Like I said before, I don't, I also haven't read anything about any documented cases nowhere that said, mentioned any long-term effect of taking the vaccine. But I even got rather thousands of cases where they have a long-term effect from catching COVID. I know family members, friends, coworkers, they had a long-term effect from having that. They are COVID nineteen. So that really doesn't register with me when you tell me that I don't know what the long-term effects for having, taking the vaccine would be, but you know what the long-term effects for catching COVID would be already, so you have documented versus undocumented. So you, that really challenges me right there, that thought challenges, challenges me when I hear somebody say that, because you make, you're not being logical. And, and I think this what this whole thing is about, is just being educated and being logical and thinking out the process. Uh, we are in a pandemic, we've never been in it before. And like sit here, we can't say what we would do in other situations, this is a first in a lifetime situation decision, it's not anything that we've done before, it's not a right, it's not a wrong. I think it's a, for me, it's a health and welfare decision. Completely, there's nothing wrong, I don't think there's no right decision. But I think, I do think going forward, it's gonna be a, a more serious this, uh, issue if we can't get to herd immunity. The, this, 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 uh, disease is spreading, it's changing rapidly. The Delta variant is, is a hundred times more potent and, and easier to, uh, transmit. And the longer you go with these kind of diseases, the longer you go with not getting control of it, the more it mutates into something else. But if someone tells me that they ain't taking the vaccine, they told me one time, they waiting to see who mutate. But I tell you what, what is mutating is the, is COVID nineteen.
Through the chair.
Buddy.
Trustee Martin.
You know, when the vaccine first came out, I, I was, uh, I was, I was wary of, of taking it also. But after, uh, talking to doctors and people in the medical field, I, I decided to take the vaccine. It's just like motorcyclists, motorcycles were mandated to wear helmets for, for many, many years. Then all of a sudden they decided to leave that up to the bikers' choice. Now, we know that motorcycles, people die in motorcycle accidents all the time, they hit their heads and they have head injuries. But people still choose not to wear a helmet, why on earth do they do that? I don't know, oh, because it's their right to do that, they have the right to choose. And I think that we should let people have the right to choose. If you don't have, if you're not vaccinated, you must wear a mask. Uh, like I said earlier, you know, we have to self-report and General Motors has even, um, provided that if you wanna show your proof of vaccination, that you can. As a matter of fact, I, I was informed that they have access to the, the state, uh, database, no, uh, saying who's been vaccinated or whatever, so someone misrepresents themselves and, uh, is being vaccinated by not wearing a mask or whatever, they, they're gonna find themselves in trouble. I think it all still boils down to a, a person's personal choice.
Yeah, but Trustee, Trustee Mine respectively, if someone decides not to wear a helmet, it's not gonna affect me, it's gonna affect him or her. It's not gonna.
It might if he runs his head through your windshield.
Well, I mean, that's, that's an accident, but I'm talking about them not wearing a helmet. I mean, not wearing a helmet, not, not wearing a helmet is not gonna make them any more, uh, less of a motorcycle driver than wearing a helmet.
But you've been vaccinated and you, you made the choice to do that, right?
I'm just saying, they could smash.
You made a choice to do, you didn't do it because, but you didn't take the vaccination because you were.
Window with a helmet on, that's all I'm saying.
But you didn't get a, but you didn't get a vaccination because you were mandated to, you got one because you chose to, right?
Exactly.
And then people, and people choose not to for the same reason, they should have the same right of choice. You shouldn't have a right to choose something and, and other people should not, shouldn't have, uh, not be afforded the same right.
I thought during a time when he made his choice to get the vaccination, it was during a time when there was no discussion about mandates, it was earlier on, there was no discussion on whether or not, um, 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 employers were going to take the position of requiring people. They were worried about getting the vaccination out, period. They weren't mandating it because they weren't thinking about that, now is the time where you have to think about it. You have healthcare companies that are mandating them, uh, their employees to be ma, vaccinated. You have, uh, college universities that are mandating people, uh, their students and their faculties to be, um, vaccinated. You have financial organizations that are mandating their, uh, staff to be, uh, vaccinated, primarily, uh, a couple of them that are on the, uh, Wall Street floor. Um, during the time that he was doing this, as you, as you, as you described, no, he didn't do it because he was mandated to do it, he did it because over half a million people were killed by this disease.
But he made a choice. He chose.
Of course he made a choice, of course he made a choice. Yes, he made a choice and that choice was not based on the fact that he was mandated to do it. He made a choice.
He chose to, he chose, he chose to do that.
Let me ask you this, if you want, if you want, if you wanna take a drink.
Let me ask you this. If you want, if you want, if you want to take a drink. Do you take a drink or, no, hold on, hold on. Do you, do you, do you take a drink? Sure, if you want to take a drink, you take a drink. Do you drive drunk? No. Why don't you drive drunk? Because you're affecting someone else. You want to affect someone else and you will suffer the consequences of that.
People that drive drunk, they choose to do that.
If you.
Hold on, hold on, okay, hold on.
Do you smoke in a public area? No, you don't smoke in a public area because you're affecting someone else. There are laws, and if you do choose to do that, you suffer the consequences.
Trustee Boyne, yeah, okay.
But there's no law for COVID vaccine, there's no law.
Trustee Martin. I'm taking back the meeting right now for a second, okay? Alright, so the thing is, are we going to mandate vaccines? And if you are going to mandate vaccines. What does that mean? Because.
What do you mean, what does it mean?
Through the chair.
Yeah.
Can I speak? I haven't spoken about this.
Trust, trustee, go ahead.
Thank you. So I, I want to explain what's happened with me and my position here. And in my perspective, last couple of weeks, when this first rolled out, I was hesitant about the way I vote. In fact, I called trustee Martin, I said, you know, if I had to do it all over again tonight, I would have voted with you. I wasn't comfortable with this, how it, you know, putting agenda items on suddenly and then calling, especially with something so important as this, and then voting on it.
We know.
And so as the, as the week or two has progressed. I've, I've heard everyone's physician who's contacted me, I've listened. And I've read articles, answered emails, read emails, looked at policies, looked at contracts. And what it boils down for me is, it's about protecting the safety and well-being of the workforce. From a direct threat. Who's looking out for those? And if someone brings this home to a child, they didn't have a decision in this. It's, you know, and Kevin, you mentioned that, um, federal law doesn't mandate it, but under federal law, EEOC allows employers to require employees. To be able to, um, require vaccinations against COVID nineteen.
That's today they do, because it's been.
We're voting on this today. Please don't interrupt me. Please don't interrupt me. Let me, let me talk, okay? So I've looked at all the data, I've read all the articles, MTA says, yes, you can. But for me, it's about where in the heck is the policy on this? We didn't, we didn't have a policy when we voted on it. Tonight, it's been re-voted, it's being, uh, brought up again. It was rescinded and brought up again without a policy. So we should have had a policy to look at and talk about this. That's why it's so important not to just throw things on the agenda. Throw is a bad word, to add things on the agenda without, um, being able to converse with everyone. But for me, it's about safety of our staff, our personnel, our employees. And the safety and welfare for those that don't have a voice. Our residents as well. That's what it boils down to for me. And I listened and it's, it's, uh, it's very unfortunate to hear that twenty percent of the, of our police workforce is ready to walk off the job. That's just hurting. But you, yes, we need a policy. We need a policy and, you know, for example, what I mean by that is. If an employee doesn't produce that COVID card, they should be able to produce it in, uh, twenty-four hours. You either have it, you got the shot or you didn't. Produce the card or you didn't. So, but we have to say here, alright, you have what? I think, uh, treasurer Bud mentioned that you had to have ninety days, you got ninety days to get this shot. Okay, so what do we do after that? You're fired? No, we should never do that. We, what's our approach? That should be put into the policy, which could be, alright, you have, you had ninety days, you haven't gotten the shot. Alright, our policy states that you have to be vaccinated. So we need the next step put in place. For me, it's about public safety, for the overall community, health and welfare of our residents, our staff, our personnel. And for even the children of all these residents and staff and, and whatnot. They don't have a voice. We need to do what's right here. And let's bring up that Delta variant, it's been hit on. It's five times more spreadable. It's five times more contagious than the original COVID virus. Can you imagine? We've had, we've lost over six hundred thousand people to death. Not, not including the ones that caught it and might have long haulers, some made it okay, but it's exhilar- this is exhilarating. The, the pandemic. Twenty percent of cases now are Delta variants. We need to look at that, we need to look at it hard. So. I'm for. Mandatory vaccinations, but we need to have a policy as to what that exactly means, board. We need clear, concise direction.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I think it's my turn now.
Okay. Trustee Boyne then.
Um. I'm going to start out this way. I don't know about anyone else on the board. However, other than. To my recollection. The vaccinations I had while I was in school. I haven't had any vaccinated. I am against vaccinations. That's me. That's me. When I was running around the city of Detroit in that blue uniform, and that thirty-eight on my hip. It was during the time when, uh, hepatitis came out. And it came down that all the officers needed to be vaccinated for hepatitis, I think it was hepatitis B. It was three shots you had to take. I was virtually one of the last ones to get a vaccination. I took my choice. I decided not to get it. There was no health reason, there was no religious reason. I just didn't want the vaccination because I didn't think I was going to get it. Well, I had a choice. Either stop being a police officer. Or get a vaccination. That was it. That was when hepatitis first came out. First came out. I am type two. I am hypertensive, very hypertensive. And I am also. A heart patient. I have coronary disease. Now, other than my age, which I'm below the age of sixty, praise the Lord. I have three of the four other conditions. That would make it very difficult for me to possibly survive the COVID. Infection. That is the choice that I made. I made a choice to live, to survive. This disease, because that is exactly what it is. Now, as far as the. Vaccination for all the other flus out there, whatever they're called. Whatever they're called. Have I had those vaccinations? No. Will I get those vaccinations? No. I won't. My wife, a member of the health community. She and I went head-to-head over, I don't think you need to take the flu vaccination. We're not going to get sick. Well, she had to take it. Otherwise, she would not have been able to acquire the level of employment that she has today. And that was some years ago. That was about ten years ago, ten, maybe twelve years ago, when we first moved here to the house. It is imperative that we take care of our employees. And it is as imperative that we take care of the residents of this township. That is our job. And our job. Is to take the steps and make the decisions. And we feel our best for us to accomplish that. Whether they be nice, whether they are not so nice. That's what we must do. We have. I'm not even going to read off, you know. But the point, you know, you know, you know, the point being is that, um. If you're looking for a plan on what are we going to do? What's going to be the repercussions? The repercussions don't need to be rehashed and reformed and restated. They're already written into the SOPs in our, um, for our employees. You're being given a directive on what to do. The consequences for disobeying those directives are clear in those SOPs. So asking what are we going to do, it's already in there. We don't need to bring that all over.
Clear. I am not firing anybody unless this board tells me to fire them. End of story.
Through the chair, then maybe we need to, maybe not vote on this tonight, have some more discussion on the policy that we want to develop here. So that's more here and, and there's no miscommunication down the road.
I support it.
And, and, and I will support that as well. Maybe we need to pull this off the agenda until a later time.
I'll pull back my motion. Uh, trustee Martin?
We can postpone it.
Trustee Martin, you want to pull back your motion?
Um, I, I will, but I, I want you to keep in mind that there is already a, a mandate on the, on the table. That we already have a voted in place, a mandate, so I'm going to address that.
And they didn't tell me anything to do to them if they don't do it.
Well, I, I, I've seen these emails of, uh, talking about insubordination and all of that. So those types of, those types of offenses have, um, consequences. So, I mean, come on now, let's.
We didn't.
Any direction.
If as far as, uh, getting time off or discharge or whatever, so I mean.
So what are we going to do? Are we going to leave the mandate in place and then add on, um, 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 directives on what to do? Are we going to do that?
Tonight?
I'm just, I'm just reminding the board that if you take, if you take this off the table, you still have, you still have a mechanism in place. To mandate vaccines, that's all I'm saying.
I have Dan Salmon that tells me that I should call up Nick, I should put Nikki, uh, uh, Director Sumter on the, uh, on the line. Regarding the current system that we have. Could you elevate her, um? We have a long-term timeline on this, because, you know, this isn't the army, this is Detroit Police Department. I know the first names of every one of those officers and so do you guys. I mean, I, I'm going to be real slowly on this. Okay. We're a small-town government. We know everybody. Nicole, are you out there?
I'm here.
Alright, could you speak about what you wanted to speak about regarding the timelines?
Um, good evening, board. I've been sitting here, I've listened to everyone's, um, statements, arguments, disputes. Um, and I would just like for you to know. That yes, there is a mandate that's still out there, so whether you decide to not vote on this today. Um, you haven't rescinded the original mandate.
Yeah, I thought you were talking.
It's that tonight.
Um.
What's the timeline on the current mandate?
The timeline we extended for the current mandate is pushed out to August sixteenth.
Alright. You know what?
Through the chair, is a new motion in order? Yeah, send, to rescind the current, uh, the current mandate until we have adopted some type of policy. Outlining, uh, how are we going to handle this?
That would be good for me.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, if it's in order, to rescind the previous policy of mandating. All employees have a COVID vaccine until this board can develop a policy. That will address, uh, all.
But I don't think you can make the motion. It has to be Kevin or somebody.
Yeah, well, he, he rescind that, well, we, well, he, he withdrew his motion and I agreed. Do we have to vote on that?
Yeah, but it's a reconsideration.
So there's no, so there's no motion on the floor now. I can make a motion.
Oh, a new motion regarding this situation has to be made by someone.
Yeah, it has to be made by me. Uh, it has to be made by somebody that voted in the majority.
Okay.
So, so, so what was the motion you were going to make?
Every rescind the current policy until we can, the current mandate, until we can come up with a, uh, a comprehensive policy to address it. COVID nineteen vaccination.
Seek approval of, of rescinding the current mandated vaccination, uh, vote until we can come up with a policy. To replace it?
To address, um. To address the repercussions and the entirety of the, excuse me, the entirety of the policy. What, if there's no compliance, what, what, you got to do something. That's what I'm saying.
Isn't, 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 isn't there some compliance already written? Huh?
And did the board approve it? No. No one. I'm pointing fingers here.
Through the chair, this, this, the, uh, the three electeds got together and we came up with a, we did come up with a, with a mandate.
Oh.
We came up with.
You haven't seen it?
We came up with what would happen. I think Nicole sent that out. What would happen if it hap- that was prior to us meeting with, with the, uh, the presidents of the unions.
Yeah, that's how we were giving them all the time in the world and.
We, we, we met and we, we spoke to them and we decided to, at that point, we decided to, uh, give an extension until the board. And also until the board met again. To reconsider, possibly reconsider. Um. I got just, like I say, I'm one person, I don't know what, what you could put in place as a, uh. Alternative. What could you put in place other than?
Oh, I know.
A, a not, no, why? I mean, what, what do you put in place? What do you say? If you don't take the vaccine, we're going to.
Well.
I don't know. What do you do? What do you say?
You know.
We also have to address if we are going to vote on mandating these vaccinations. We also need to put in place that it should include booster shots. That hasn't been even addressed. Or else you're going to have a gap where people aren't, could possibly not be covered.
That, you're, that is extremely.
Needs to be.
But that's exactly why I follow the state of Michigan whenever I don't know, because I never even thought of booster shots.
Well, if we're going to mandate them getting vaccines, we should mandate that they should get any further shots. Maintain vaccination status and/or booster shots.
This is that boy, and I'll be right back.
About things like that. They, they.
So if we're going to, you know, it's getting a little money here as to what we're going to do. Look, we can go ahead and vote on this, but if the three-time full, I'm sorry, the three-time, three full-time elected officials. Want to revise the language here on our policy that the three of you have, um, come up with. I'm okay with that. But I think it needs to include this language. And also a clear language that they're not going to be fired. And also a clear language that they're not gonna be fired just because they got, didn't get vaccinated out of the gate. We need to be clear on that. The steps need to be clear on what will happen and when termination will occur.
That's what I'm saying. We need some direction. What, 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 what do you suggest? What would happen? I need, I, I need some direction.
Need to work on that at a later time. I, I think we can.
Yeah.
We, we're gonna, we're gonna be here all night talking about that. I'm sorry for the interruption.
So, so as my reconsideration, I, I first want to repeal the mandatory vaccination policy and replace it with a, um, a directive by the board for the full-time electors to come up with a policy of that. I'll say that.
With board input?
See again?
With board input, sure.
Yeah, board approval. Input and approval.
I'll see you.
Discuss it though.
Okay, did, did somebody get that? We got it on tape, so. Repealing the mandatory vaccination, directing.
No.
No.
But.
In the, uh, and directing the full times to come up with a policy regarding vaccinations with board input and approval. And you can still vote.
Or it could be input.
I'm sorry, maybe I'm from my old school, but I don't know. To me, we have a policy called insubordination. Not gonna, I'm not doing it. You know that. Unless you tell me fired, I'm not doing it.
So Board, are we going to, so we, we, we need to make a decision here, which direction we're gonna go.
I would suggest we leave the policy in place. They've extended it for the, for the days, so it's extended into August. So at the next meeting, the only thing I would suggest is we have a policy in place that everybody can look at to see where we're going. And if we're looking at the policy, then we can make the choices what we want to do with it. That would be my suggestion.
I support that.
Well, I may not be here for the next meeting, but okay. So, I mean, we have to wait until the meeting after that, so.
Through the chair. I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding what you're saying because we already have a policy in place through the COVID plan if you're not mandating it. So the only thing that we're talking about today, I'll just wanna be clear, I wanna make sure I'm getting this, is if you do continue the mandate, you want language to be in place for the next board meeting. Am I understanding that correctly?
Right, but what we want is it, is this a step-by-step what happens if the employee has not been vaccinated because we have the mandate in place? What is the policy if it doesn't happen?
So you're not removing the mandate is what I'm trying to get at.
That's right.
There's no vote that's been taken on the call. There's no, no, there's no vote. Currently, there's current mandate is still in place. We have a motion in our support, but we haven't had a vote to eliminate any day.
Because the motion was withdrawn. Kevin withdrew that motion then.
It's a new motion on the floor.
Three full-time electors set that policy. So if we need to extend it past August fifteenth, we three can do it, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. It's thundering out.
The three full-time elected set the policy on the timeline. So if the three full-time electors need to extend that, we can do it. Because there is a strong chance that this is not going to be done for that August first meeting. And if, and if it's not, I may not even be at that meeting.
Well, that's, 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 that's fine. If we go to the second meeting in August, we go to the second meeting in August.
I mean, I think I've missed two meetings in my, since I've been here.
If you're here, we have to continue.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see a problem in that, but what we need to do is make a decision on what it is that we're doing. If, if, if you need to pull the motion that you and Kevin just, um, just made and then we go with treasure buds, then fine, that's what we need to do. And I think that might be the best course of action for us to take right now.
That wasn't a motion, was it, Treasure Bud?
No, I didn't make a motion. I, I just said, you know, we should leave it right where we're at and give in direction to the full-time electors that we will put in place a policy and procedure and bring it back to, to an August meeting.
So will you make?
Sorry, through the chair, didn't you, didn't you make another motion?
No.
No. Can you make the motion?
I can make a motion. All right.
I thought, I thought, well, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm thinking like Kevin also. I thought, I thought Kevin McNamara made a motion also.
You can do it.
He rescinded the first motion, then he made the second motion.
And then he rescinded.
Okay. Didn't hear that because I seconded, I didn't, nobody, I didn't get.
Cannot make a motion is Kevin Martin. Okay, anybody that voted in the majority can make the motion.
Can I second a motion?
Yes, you can. Make the motion, Chair.
Make the motion.
Okay, I would make a motion that we leave in place the motion that was passed at the last board meeting with the understanding that we have extended the date for the ninety days. We will look at now creating a policy step by step that what happens to how we help employees get the vaccination and what are the consequences if they don't.
Support.
Okay, I got my, my treasure bud and Kevin Martin, you said you wanted to support that for?
I did. I said support.
It's treasure, uh. Thank you.
Uh, clerk Wright, please call the roll and take us home.
Treasury Bud?
Yes.
Trustee Frazier?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
No.
Trustee Boyne?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Trustee supervisor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. We've received a budgetary reports of January twenty-first, uh, February twenty-first, March twenty-first, and the April of twenty twenty-one. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items?
Uh, question. You said budgetary report of January twenty-first?
Twenty twenty-one. Yeah. They're all in your pack somewhere.
January of twenty twenty-one, not of January twenty-first.
You mean July, skip.
It's late. It's late.
I read past and skip around. Okay.
Okay.
Public comment?
Yes, we do have a public comment. Um, Stephen Dark said on, on that non-agenda items, something needs to be done about the old abandoned bank off of Hagerty Road right next to the Trilogy Apartments. Not only has the structure been an eyesore for a very long time, but it has recently become a target for several vandals. Along with a few other areas in the township, the owner of the property should either fix it up or tear it down before it lures any other gang-related activity to the area. We do have Director Power on the line, I believe, and he has his hand raised. So I'm gonna promote him to talk about this, if that's okay.
Yes.
Okay. Director Power, you should be all set.
Good evening, Board. Thank you very much. Just to respond to that briefly, I believe Mr. Dark is referring to the mobile gas station at one-one-two-five-zero Hagerty Road.
No, it's not. He's referring, there's a, there is a. Over there.
Yeah, there's, there's a shell of a bank over there.
There's the bank. That's right.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
We will, we will look into that and, and see what we can do.
That's okay, yeah. All right, um, anybody else have a comment?
I am not seeing any virtual hands raised at this time.
Does the board want to make any comments?
I have a comment.
Good.
So it's a shame that we can't hear from these people directly. It, and I thought we were looking into having our residents and whoever wanted to speak to the board, being able to do that just like we see each other here. What's the status of that?
They can if they want to come in, uh, through, through a different portal. There's other portals that they come in on.
And is that easy for them to see that possibility?
Use Zoom would know how or, or through our, uh, our website. They can come in on their phone, they can come in on Zoom. And if they come in on Zoom, they can actually, uh, just, they can actually just take their face right off, but like we do, video.
Okay, so why haven't we seen anyone?
Uh, I don't. They're not logging into the portal of Trustee Miller. Through the chair, through the chair before I forget. I would like to, I would like to say a form of goodbye to Director Taylor. I think this is gonna be his last board meeting. I'd like, like, I'd like to let her know that I really enjoy working with him. And I think he's a very, it's not the last one. I was told it will be.
August, right? Mid-August?
Leave August first.
August fourteenth.
Friday the thirteenth, he's leaving.
Yeah, that day is etched in my brain.
I scratched that. I'm sorry. I'll wait. I was, I thought it was August first. I'm sorry. Yeah, that still mean the same. I got a parking spot. All right. Does anybody else have a comment?
I have a quick comment, uh, through the chair, just to follow up on Trustee Miller and some, some of the comments that were made about allowing public comment that, that is visual through our public, uh, through these Zoom meetings.
Through the porthole, they said.
There, we have the capacity to do that just as, just as I'm able to, uh, make a comment, uh, right now and join and have a visual meeting. We, this is something that we've looked at and looked at it all through all the different communities and that looked at. Completely compliant with the Open Meetings Act. The reason that we have stayed away from that and that we've seen all other communities stay away from that is because of, uh, potential for Zoom bombing and for inappropriate displays to be shown in a visual sense. So that we've been able to have audio, uh, and, and have it a back and forth with the, the public through this, through this capacity. But during, before Zoom and for virtual meetings, it's something that we have stayed away from and has been based on the, a lot of those best practices that we've seen. I know Alicia has, has attended, uh, Natoa and has been in contact with other communities to see what they have done for the virtual meetings. And that was the reason that we've stayed away from that for the, for the video sets. But they are able to make written comment and they're also able to, uh, have audio comment during the meetings. But the, but the virtual has opened up a can of worms and it's not just theoretical. It has happened in other communities outside of the state.
It's happened to the township, but I thought you could somehow filter them before we got a bomb dropped on.
No, there's, there's.
Okay, that's a good explanation.
Yeah, there's no lead time enough that this sensor is such a, such a behavior. And I do wanna say we, very, very low chance that that would happen. This is a very respectful community and all of our public that has never made comment over here has been, always been very respectful, but it does leave open the potential, especially for people outside the community who see an opportunity to, for shock value, do, do things such as that, that we've stayed away from that for the virtual. And when we'll have another discussion on having an in-person meeting, we can talk more about allowing some sort of hybrids, uh, scenario for people that are wanting to remain remotely to make comment.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Get you some pictures on your walls. Ready to go now, aren't we? Call for German.
Go move.
Support.
Uh, hearing nobody in the negative, I call Sturgis.